My name is Matt Cecil, I'm the Projects Manager for Wildlife Queensland. Just quickly though, we are recording this webinar, so if any important time during the proceedings you need to disappear, that's okay, you won't miss out on any amazing content, you can still access the recording and all the content via the Wildlife Queensland webpage in a day or so, once we put it all up there. Today's one hour webinar was a really exciting one, we're quite pleased to bring this to you all today. We will be talking to Dr Shaun Fitzgibbon about South East Queensland's koala population. And we'll give you some tips for how you can locate koalas. And what you can do with your information when you do find them, like participate in surveys, citizen science surveys. And we'll give you information about the Logan City Council's Koala Count, which is happening during the month of November. So we're going to provide you with all the skills necessary to get involved with some cool citizen science projects. This webinar has been supported by the Logan City Council. And there are plenty of good people within the council that have been working extremely hard on the conservation of koala populations as part of their koala conservation strategic plan. Things that they're doing include monitoring and surveying for koalas using scat detection dogs. Building corridors between habitat and using wildlife movement solutions to reduce the risk of vehicle strikes, which are a big deal for koala conservation. Offsetting rehabilitation and revegetation projects, which all help koalas in the long run. Logan Council are also raising awareness of koalas via the Koala Movement Awareness Campaign, which includes roadside banners, social media posts and radio interviews. They've also acquired a lot of land and recently there was 212 hectares purchased in Green Bank, which has been set aside for the conservation of koalas and gliders and another wildlife species, which is fantastic. And Logan City Council have a fantastic conservation partnership program, which is where they partner with property owners and provide information to residents on how to keep your backyard wildlife friendly, on weeds, on native plants. And it also provides you free access to events such as this one, so you can learn more about native wildlife. There will be a ton of information we're going to cover today, luckily it's being recorded, so you don't have to remember it all at once. But some of the things that we really want you to take away include a better understanding of koala habitat, their diet, behaviour and reproduction, and just their general koala ecology. Where you might find koalas, how to identify their particular scratch marks, their scats, the sounds they make or bellows, as the koala experts like to call them. And how to check if one's a male or a female if you're viewing them high up in the canopy of a tree, not necessarily an easy thing to do. What do you do if you find a sick or injured koala, a really important message to get out there? How to protect koalas and keep your property koala friendly, really good information how you can actually help in your own backyard. I mean, really would like to encourage you all to report your koala sightings via iNaturalist, which is a free wildlife reporting app that feeds into the app system in Australia. From iNaturalist, you're able then to participate in citizen science surveys like the Logan Koala Count. And your information, the sightings you find are made available to researchers who can then really use that important sightings data to make better and informed conservation management decisions. Our guest speaker, Dr Shaun Fitzgibbon, is going to talk a little bit about some of the research he's working on through the wildlife through University of Queensland. And that should be really interesting. If you do have any questions for myself or Shaun about content delivered during this webinar today, we will have a Q and A session. And that will be the end of Shaun's talk. So use the Q and A function and go on to type in your questions and we'll do our best to answer those at the end. If we can't answer all of them, and no doubt we will have to leave some. We'll do our best to write written answers and make that content available at the download. All right, it's time to now hear from our presenter Shaun Fitzgibbon, sorry, Dr Shaun Fitzgibbon. A research fellow at the University of Queensland, specialising in the behavioural ecology of mammals, especially koalas. A lot of his recent research has focused on how koalas use and move through fragmented landscapes, very relevant to today's sport. Understanding koala mating, gauging how koalas might cope with future climate change scenarios, and that's a really important part of the conservation of the species on a ongoing basis. And studying wildlife diseases in koala populations, particularly chlamydia, and how the animals might cope with that. All right, that's enough out of me Shaun, over to you, take it away.
Thanks very much Matt, it's great to be part of the event today. I'll just get my screen sharing happening and while I'm doing that, I will confirm that in this age of online Zoom meetings, I'm not still in pyjama pants. Okay, so I've been working at the University of Queensland on koalas for the last 15 years. So I'm going to share a little bit of our research findings today. And also my partner is a vet at Australia Wildlife Hospital, Amber. And I've learnt an awful lot through that as well, about just the welfare and treatment of koalas. And I'll share a little of that. The overview for the talk firstly, a quick run through of koala habitats, diet and some some aspects of their ecology. But what I really want to focus on is equipping you with some skills to tell if koalas are present in an area. So that's tips for searching for actual koalas and then tips for looking for their signs, evidence that they are there. And then if you happen to see a koala, there's a few key things that I think you should note down to have a look at, particularly if you've got some binoculars. And then assessing whether the koala that you're looking at may need help. So that's not necessarily during your survey for the Logan Koala Count, but perhaps at another time you might see a koala in a situation, you're wondering, is that a koala in need? Does, is it something that I should respond to and how do I respond appropriately? I'll finish up talking about some aspects of protection of koalas and things that I think we can be doing better. And encouraging you to then get involved in the Logan Koala Count, which in an indirect way is helping to protect koalas because it's really crucial that we get a better understanding of where koalas occur and how those populations are trending. And I'll push the iNaturalist app as well because it's a great way to record your sightings. First of all, you're probably all very familiar with the fact that koalas occur in a very wide variety of habitats. You've got your traditional wet and dry eucalypt forest that, bottom picture on the left there showing a big expanse of dry eucalypt forest. And then right up into open woodlands, the picture on the right hand side, and they all on the right hand side, and they all occur even in swampy, heaty areas where eucalypts aren't necessarily the dominant tree. All right, so I'll just quickly back, that was the overview that I talked through anyway. But so that image there, the images there showing the different types of habitat. The eucalypt woodland on the right and the more traditional eucalypt forest that we're used to seeing koalas occupying. But the other, I find that the word habitat's actually quite interesting, it's usually defined as the natural home or environment of an organism. But that's, yeah, that's tricky because we know that koalas can occur in a variety of areas that we wouldn't consider natural. They occur in little bushland patches in urban areas where that's all they've got remaining. We know they make good use of roadside corridors. And they're very good at utilising even scattered paddock trees, such as in that image there, the tree out to the left. We've done a lot of tracking of koalas in agricultural landscapes. And those scattered trees can be really crucial as stepping stones and used regularly as actual habitat for feeding them. You'd all be aware that koalas only eat certain types of trees and most of those belong to one of these four genera. The Eucalyptus, Laphostemen, Melaleuca and Corimbia genera. And there's some examples of those types of trees below the paper box of the Melaleucas. There's two types of Laphostemen's in the middle there, the brush box and the swamp box, both of which koalas seem to eat quite regularly. And then on the right hand side, they've got a picture of a blue gum next to a bloodwood. And we know koalas might use, wide use of Eucalyptus and Corimbia species. Within Logan, there's a few species that are their favourites, including the blue gum, the tallagood, swamp mahogany and gumtop box. We've got a study going on down in the south east of Logan where it's really dominated by gumtop box and seems to be habitat for quite a good number of koalas. But that's just a short list, there's plenty more that koalas get into, including the grey gum, ironbarks and other types of mahogonies. The dietary preferences are really specific and they can change over really short distances. So what they're eating up in the north of Logan up Carbrook Way is probably going to be very different to down at Mundurran or out at Lyons. It depends on what's available to them, but what we've also been finding out through some more recent research, not ours but other groups, is that it's a lot to do with the microbiome of a koala, which is that the gut flora, the bacteria that enable them to digest eucalyptus leaf. So yeah, we can't necessarily take a koala from one habitat and expect it to survive in another if it's got an adaptation to eating leaf that's no longer available. Koalas, if they live a good, a good life, live 10 to 15 years. Unfortunately, it's generally less in suburbia because of all the threats that you'd be familiar with, the cars, dogs and disease. But if they're in captivity, they tend to even live longer than that, they can live 18, 20 years because they've got such a cushy lifestyle. Food delivered to them, they don't have to do much in the way of moving around and there's no threats of course. So we've done a lot of collaring of koalas over the years and what we found, and other groups have done much the same and found the same sort of results. Koalas don't move a great deal per night, sort of 50 to 100 metres on average. I mean, we've had koalas move kilometres in a night, but on average they don't move too far. And they have a typical home range size of two to 10 hectares. But you know, these are averages, that study that I mentioned out near Logan Village. We know the koalas there seem to average home ranges of 30 to 50 hectares. We also know that koalas almost always have home ranges that overlap and they overlap with several individuals. That image that I've pasted there is some home range maps that we came up with from a study of koalas in an agricultural landscape. It was a mix of agriculture and bushland fragments. You can each colour there as a different koala and you can see the level of overlap. Another thing we've worked out from this, we've used collars that enable us to know when a koala comes within about one to two metres of another koala. And we know that those home range overlaps also allow a lot of social interaction. So even though koalas are regarded as solitary, they do seem to hang out quite a bit more than what we might have thought. And something that surprised us and we don't really know why, but females hang out quite a lot, adult females will get together within one or two metres. We don't know what they're doing, whether there's some social interaction going on, exchange of information, we're not sure, but still so much we don't understand about koalas. Again, you'd be pretty familiar with some of this information. The koala's a seasonal breeder, mostly in spring and summer is when they ramp up and start breeding. And after 34 days, they'll give birth. And that young is then with the mother for 12, on average 12 months, they can even double that if the mother doesn't breed again. We have seen situations where the young will hang out with mum for up to two years. Those independent females are able to breed at two to three years of age. And female koalas can only produce one joey per year. But in, you know, in stressful environmental conditions, they may not do that every year. We found that certainly in central Queensland during some drought where reproduction pretty much dropped to zero for many years. Something you may not have realised is that koalas are induced ovulators. So the female will only release an egg for fertilisation at or shortly after mating. Yeah, plenty of interesting things about koalas and their mating. Some images to give you a rundown of the growth of the young. It'll be familiar with the typical marsupial being born naked, blind and crawling into the pouch unaided, which is amazing. That's the image up there on day one, attaches to the teat. The koala will only use that one teat, even though the female has two. She will only lactate from that one. At about six to seven months, they start coming out of the pouch, they've got fully, a full fur covering by that stage. And they'll start to eat a bit of leaf as well as some of mum's milk still, and by 12 months, they're usually ready to go. You can see that image on the bottom right there, so I'll talk a little bit about this in a while, but both those koalas are tagged. You can see the female, the mum has a tag in the right ear and that little young we know must be a boy because he's got a tag in the left ear. So that's something, a little convention that seems to be used throughout all koala hospitals and amongst wildlife researchers. I'll mention that again, this is one of the things I think you should look for when you're sighting koalas out in bush. So how can we tell if koalas occur in an area? Well firstly, it's not easy, it's quite tricky because the best way to do it is to sight the koala, then you've got unequivocal evidence that the koalas are occurring in that area. But you would all be aware, koalas are highly cryptic and it's very easy to walk underneath them, even when you're looking for them. We have a lot of collared koalas that we go and track regularly. Even when we know we've got the radio signal pointing up to a tree, sometimes we can struggle, you know, five to 10 minutes before we can sight them because they're just blending in so well or they're right up in the top of the canopy. So sighting them is the best way, but it's difficult. Other than that, we can use evidence that they leave in the environment to know that they are present, particularly their scats. Scratches that they might leave on tree trunks. And if they've died, we can use their bones if we happen to bump into a koala skull in particular. That's another way to know that they're in that environment or at least were. And then the third way, which is, it's probably only applicable for people that live next to bushland or like to go out into the bush at night time, because that's when koalas do most of this, their vocalisations. And as Matt said, the term you often hear is bellowing. So koalas are a very vocal species, it's tightly linked to their mating. And most of that then will be in spring and summer. I should have mentioned before, koalas will breed at any time of the year. But the majority of their breeding is in spring and summer. So we're right now in the core bit of the koala breeding season. September, October is when we really see a big ramping up of the bellowing. So this is what a male koala sounds like. Okay, so that was a male koala. You will also hear other sounds, the females and small males that are getting aggressively attacked by other males. Or females that are having unwanted advances will produce a bit of a screeching sound, I'll just see if I can play that. Oh, hang on, sorry, I'm back on the bellow. Let's head over to the screech. The tips, if you're out, perhaps you're taking part in the Logan Koala Survey or you're outside of that event, you just want to know if koalas are in the environment. What I suggest is that you scan the canopy. Don't spend too long on any particular tree, you don't have to look in every nook and cranny. Otherwise it'll just take you forever. So look at all the, scan the canopy and you still have to move along at a reasonable pace. I like to look in the upper branches generally and then some of the more prominent forks. But really, you're just looking for the silhouette or the shape. And I do recommend you try and look from different angles, so I like to move along and stop. Have a visual search of what's around me, I might move then another 15, 20 metres, stop and even look back at what you've already looked at from a different angle. Again, koalas are so cryptic and if there's thick canopy, it's really quite difficult to spot them even when we know that they're there. Some studies that have looked at the effectiveness of surveys of experienced koala spotters have found that they still miss one in four koalas. This is using radio collared koalas, so we know how many are out there and then send people out and see if they can find them. So one in four, the experienced people are missing. And then they've done the same with inexperienced spotters and found that they're lucky if they find 25% of the koalas. So don't be disheartened though, you can still get out there and you might get lucky and find a koala like over here on the bottom right, it's making itself quite obvious. You can see that really clear silhouette, the koala over on the bottom left there, also reasonably obvious, you can see the dark silhouette. But there's a koala up in the canopy of that second left image, you know, you'd be really hard pressed, that was a collared koala, that's the only way I would have ever been able to find that. And there's a koala down here in the fork, which again would be probably pretty easy to miss. So target the food trees, but keep in mind that koalas will sit in any type of tree, including weedy trees, non-food trees. And we've got a study at the moment that we're doing on koalas in Brisbane and we're finding a lot of use of camphor laurels over summer. And really hard to search for koalas in those types of trees because the leaf is just so dense. But they make use of all types of trees, so don't just look at the food trees, but that's where you should start. Okay, some other tips, when you're walking, try to avoid walking so that you're looking into the sun, keep the sun at your back. And avoid walking while you're looking just for fear of tripping over, unless you happen to be on a nice big open path like a fire trail. I really recommend that if you've got binoculars, take them with you. And if you don't have them, even a relatively cheap pair can be really helpful to examine some suspicious lumps because there's all sorts of things that can trip you up. We often still get confused by termite mounds, arboreal termite mounds. And opossum drays, bird nests, even green ant nests in central Queensland regularly trip us up. So binoculars are great to confirm if you are looking at a koala. And then to find out some more detail about that koala, which I'll talk about in a moment. And remember to take rests, I still get a sore neck when I'm out doing a day of searching for koalas. And it's good to mix it up with looking up, looking for koalas with looking for their other signs, which I'll cover soon. So you're not always looking up, but you're looking down as well. Okay, so failing finding a koala in the environment, what else can we use? The thing I really like to rely on is picking up koala scats or detecting koala scats. They're very distinct and they're the most reliable sign, I believe, to conclude that koalas occur in an area. Koalas produce a lot of pellets and a lot of poos, 80 to 130 per day. So they're relatively abundant in the environment if there's koalas around. And as I said, they're quite distinct, they're often described as torpedo shaped, relatively long and cylindrical and really quite round. I'll put up a picture of opossum poos in a moment, that's one of the ways I like to differentiate between those two that can be confused. The opossums aren't as round and there's a few other little things about them that can make it a bit easier to work out what you're looking at. So koalas, long and cylindrical, 20 to 30mm. And usually a bit skinnier at one end, a bit fatter at the other. The colour can vary a lot, especially with age. So in that diagram on the right there, the scat in the middle is really fresh. And then down the bottom, we've got a scat that might be one or two weeks old, it's started to dry out. And then up in the top here, this is also a koala scat, but it looks like it's been out for months. It's really starting to break down and it's gone that brownie colour, easy to miss those ones. But these really fresh ones, they do stand out quite a lot if you, if you spend the time to have a look. So what I suggest is that you allow about a minute, if you want to have a good search. Allow about a minute at a food tree, you might be at the base of a blue gum and this is your typical view. You're looking at the leaf litter, I mean, I've been down, I really tried to get down there and have a hunt around. So in that image, there's quite a few scats. I know it's a bit hard on the computer, but if you're out in the bush, you will pick them up pretty easily once you know what you're looking for. And the key thing for me is that because koalas do so many poos, the abundance of scats is a real telltale sign that you've got koalas and that you haven't just bumped into one or two opossum scats. The abundance is really key. So as I mentioned, the opossums can trip you up and it's not an exact science. I still pick up some koala scats when I'm surveying and pick up some scats and wonder, is that a possum, is that a koala? Generally, the koala scats are quite firm and hard. And when you break them open, the content is really finely ground up. Whereas opossums, they seem to be much more coarse, the content. And you can see things like seeds and bits of leaf that haven't been chewed up anywhere near as well as what koalas do. So that's one of the key ways to differentiate, break them open, have a look. I know, you know, you've got to be willing to tackle a couple of poos in your hand, but koala poos at least are some of the cleanest poos you're going to get, opossum poo can be quite smelly. But don't be, don't be afraid, get out there, have a look for the poos. As I said, falling short of looking, of finding an actual koala in the environment, it's the scats that I really rely on to be able to say, yes, I think this is an area that where koalas occur. I've also mentioned before that opossums have a slightly different shapes, they often do have these little pointed tips on them. Not sure if my little mouse pointer is showing up there, but you can see a tip on one of those little scats. And opossums seem to have flatter faces on some sides of the scats, whereas koalas are almost always nice and round. And there's books out there, there's information on the, on the web that you can look up. There's scats tracks and signs, something like that, a book written by Barbara Triggs, which is really helpful if you want to look into that a bit more. Okay, so after looking for scats, you can also be looking for scratches on trees. But I really want to highlight that this is a less confident way to know if koalas are in an area. I never rely solely on scratches on trees. It's, if I see scratches, I would like to confirm that then by finding some koala scats. And the reason is that there's other animals that can leave very similar scratch marks on trees, particularly brush tailed opossums. And if there's gowans in an environment, they leave really similar scratch marks. I suggest you look low down on the trunk in those first, you know, two to three metres. The reason being that when a koala approaches a tree, it jumps up onto it usually and will do a couple of quick bounds before it will slow down and sort of walk in a different way up the tree. I presume that's because, you know, they want to get off the ground as quick as they can and get up to a safe height. So their claws really make those deep marks at the base of the tree. And I've got some examples here, remember, you're only going to see koala scratch marks on smooth bark trees. So just have a bit of a peek at those for a moment, that's a grey gum on the left side. A blue gum up on the top. And I've zoomed in on a couple of scratches on that grey gum that are really quite typical of koalas. They leave those two long scratches which they make with their forearms. And they'll be on each side of the tree usually. And that, once they get their grip, then as I said, the scratches become less prominent. So definitely look for scratches on the smooth bark trees, the scribbly gum will show them up nicely. But if you're in an area where there's not a lot of smooth bark trees, it's not a method that you can rely on really. You definitely won't see scratch marks on ironbarks, on tallagood, you might see the fibrous bark is roughened up a lot. But again, very difficult to know if that's been caused by a koala or some other animal. And the third way that I mentioned, you can know if a koala occurs in an area, koalas occur, is by finding their bones. They've got some features of their skull in particular that make them quite easy to identify. They've got very prominent incisors, so that koala on the left, that live koala, you can see the lower incisors are really large. And that's very obvious in that koala skull in the middle. And then the molar teeth are really prominent and just the general shape of the skull, the way the eye orbits are accommodated. Again, that book that I mentioned or looking online will help you if you want some more information on how to compare skulls and work out what you're looking at. It's also interesting, we age koalas by looking at their tooth wear. So as koalas get older, their teeth will wear down, as is common in a lot of marsupials. So the second and third molar there will be flat by the time a koala's sort of 10, 10 years plus. Okay, if you happen to be lucky enough to spot a koala, what should you be looking for? Well, first thing is trying to work out if you're looking at a male or a female. I don't need to tell you that if you can see a back young, you're looking at a female. And that, well, but also you can, you might not see a back young, but do have a look for a bulge in the pouch. It's, they're sometimes really prominent if the young's quite large, but still in the pouch. That's a good way to know that you're looking at a female. It has a lot to do with how the koala is positioned when you're looking at it and they're probably going to be high up. So again, this is where having binoculars is really super helpful. Males have testes, but I'm not sure how much detail I should go into here, but most marsupials, the males have testes, but they don't have a penis that's exposed. And in that image on the right there, the penis is housed inside the cloaca, the sort of common neurogenital exit. So you won't see a penis, but if you see a prominent set of testicles in a scrotum, you know you're looking at a boy. The other thing is that boys, once you get a little bit familiar with looking at koalas, the boys, you describe them as having a bit of a buff head and a really enlarged nose, so that's why I put an image in the middle there. That's a male that we trapped for a while and he had a really prominent big nose. But it's not always easy to tell. Another way you can work it out is that males develop a sternal gland, so on their chest, they've got a gland. Is that males develop a sternal gland. So on their chest, they've got a gland that secretes hormones. If you see that, you know that you're looking at a male. That koala on the right there, I can't see any testes. We can't see if there's a pouch or any bulge. It's a nose, you know, and its head. It could be a girl, but I can see just below its chin. There's a little bit of dark fur there, so that's just the base of the sternal gland. So I can be really confident then that that's a male koala. The sternal grand gland becomes um really active in that breeding period. So um if you happen to see it um outside of the breeding season, you know, maybe over winter. Um, it might not be as obvious. It it won't be as dark. It's not secreting as much hormone. I should say they, so they'll rub that gland on trees um to to scent mark. And a koala that's a male koala that's got a really active sternal gland. Um, you can, you can smell that koala in the environment. Sometimes that's how we've known there's a koala around before we've sighted it. The next thing to look at is is the koala healthy? Here's some images of healthy koalas. You've got nice clear eyes, um no signs of any inflammation. And we've got a good looking pelt on that koala in the middle that's anesthetised. Um, the the fur all looks fantastic. And there's its rump. We've lifted up the back legs. You can see a lovely white rump. So that's, they're healthy koalas. You would know that chlamydia causes a lot of issues for koalas and it affects the eyes and the rump. And so here's some um images of some poor koalas affected by chlamydia. You can see how it inflames the eyes and the tissue can get um so reddened and and pussy in some situations where they. They can't actually see out of that eye anymore. Uh, and the, so that's the conjunctivitis condition. And then chlamydia can also cause that staining of the rump, which is technically called um cystitis. And they have um bladder infections, they've weak uh urine. Uh, it's quite painful for them. So uh yeah, if koala in this sort of situation, you, if possible, you definitely want to call. Um, R S P C A or Wild Care, and we've got their numbers coming up. Uh, and see if that's a koala that can be rescued and and treated. Some other things to look for is to know whether you should be responding if this is a koala that needs help. So I've mentioned about the eyes and and the the wet bottom or the dirty tail, they often call it. Um, you can also be looking for any signs of injury, you know, for koala. Sometimes koalas might get clipped by a car and they manage to get off to the side of the road. Oh, sorry, I'm not sure what's happened there. Just one moment, I'll get my, there we go. Um, and so, yeah, have a look for any signs of cuts or blood. If the koala is really skinny, emaciated looking, then there's probably an issue. It's probably not feeding. Um, if you happen to see it moving and it doesn't look like it's moving well, that can be another cause for concern. And this one, you know, I mentioned it with a little word of caution, because I've seen healthy koalas stay in trees for multiple days. And in the same tree, but it can also be a sign that perhaps that koala is not doing well. So um and you know, if you're in doubt, it's probably best to err on the side of caution. Make the call to um people that know more anyway, and and they can help assess the situation. Uh, and particularly if you see a koala on the ground or sitting at the base of a tree, as in that image there, then yeah, there's, there's almost certainly a problem. Please, um, another word of caution, koalas, I mean, that we see so many cuddly images, but koalas can be very aggressive. Um, I've seen people get bitten by koalas during our research activities. And it's, it's painful. Um, they've got those massive teeth and they don't let go. So um be very careful if you if you feel you have to do something with the koala. I would use a box or a big thick towel, um if you really have to handle it, but otherwise, best to just observe the koala until. The rescue team gets there. Um, so other reasons that you might consider making those calls to R S P C A or Wild Care is if the koala. Is in a situation of imminent danger. And again, this is a grey one. It's hard to assess. So if a koala is in a tree, right at the edge of a busy road. Um, I've seen a koala in in a median strip on a busy road. That was certainly a situation where I thought, right, that that koala was in trouble. It was a healthy koala, but it had got itself into a dangerous situation. Um, so the rescue group came and sat for three nights until that koala came out of that tree and escorted it across the road. Um, of course, if the koala's in a tree in a backyard um with an aggressive dog. Um, I would be worried about that koala. And if they're in precarious situations, such as, you know, I've put up a power pole or. A koala in that sort of image there on a, on a wooden fence. There was a massive dog in the, in the yard on the other side of that koala. Um, yeah, you've got to use your your judgment in these situations. Koalas at the side of busy roads aren't always in trouble. That might, you know, koalas. They're amazing animals. They do make use of trees throughout our urban spaces, but we've just got to. Try to know when's the right time to intervene and when not to, when to leave them doing their thing. Young koalas um are particularly, um I guess. Vulnerable because during their dispersal phase, when they're sort of one year onwards. They will move in, uh trying to find their own home range. They will move through. Uh, all sorts of dangerous situations, and that's where we often find them out in suburbia, well away from bush patches. So make the call there. And there's the numbers, uh R S P C A and Wild Care, and they operate as it says, round the clock. I just want to give a little acknowledgement to the amazing work of rescuers and rehabilitators that. Go and um respond to those phone calls and then treat the koalas. As I mentioned, my partner Amber is heavily involved in this. This, this just shows what great things can be achieved. That koala there up in the top left, these are all images of the same koala. It was part of a research program. Um, that's how it looked at the start when we first caught it up on the top left, one week later, after. Uh, it had started its antibiotic treatment at the Wildlife Hospital. Three weeks later, and then five weeks later, and then we put a collar on it and put it back out in the bush. And the image on the right there. Um, is how that same koala Newton was looking one year later. So just a massive turnaround. That male couldn't see. He was still in good condition. I'm not sure for how much longer. But um he was very vulnerable. He couldn't see really, you know, where he was going. So a very good chance that he's gonna wander into a dangerous situation there. We were able to store his site through um. The wonders of the treatment and drugs up at the Wildlife Hospital. Okay, so um nearing the end now. If you're gonna take part in the Logan Koala Count, I really strongly suggest you download the iNaturalist app on your phone. Um, it's a social network. All sorts of people use it, but it's a great way to map and share biodiversity observations across the globe. Um, and the, what I really like about it is that all the records get uploaded to the Atlas of Living Australia, so they're then available to researchers and. For all sorts of purposes, mapping to know where koalas are occurring, what area should we be protecting. Particularly to know where koalas are occurring that might not currently be mapped as as important koala habitat. So download that app and have a play with it. It's um, I'm fairly new to it, but it's quite intuitive. And you upload your images or um sounds, you can also upload. And people can then validate what what you've recorded. And um, and that's how the records um become authenticated. So it's a great system. Uh, so finishing up with a couple of key messages about protecting koalas, of course, we all know that addressing habitat loss and fragmentation is key. Um, I've put in a couple of images here, projects we're directly involved in. You can see it's the same koala in both image. He seemed to develop a bit of a taste for these young swamp mahogany's. Those trees are only two years old when we found him climbing up them and eating them. Um, it was amazing, you know, the trees were hardly big enough to support his weight. But we can very quickly turn things around um with habitat restoration. So get involved in that if you can on your property or join local bush care groups. It's, it's very rewarding. Um, and improving habitat quality through weeding. And um as Matt's mentioned, Logan City Council has their environmental conservation partnerships. So encourage you to have a look at that. That's a screenshot from the website. So have have a bit more um of a play with that on the, on the web and and learn a bit more about that. Um, another key thing, of course, is addressing diseased dogs and vehicles. I've mentioned the great work that the rescuers do and the hospitals that treat the injured and sick koalas. Well, dog control is something that um at some of our sites we've realised is is more important than we've given it um attention in the past. Um, so there's a lot of that going on. Uh, responsible pet ownership, of course. Don't let your dogs run, run loose in bushland. And if you've got koalas in, in the area where you live, try to um. Um, allow koalas, if if you can, to use your yard, particularly if you've got trees that are going to invite them in. And there's a great uh diagram that I've got coming up of that Logan's provided to give you an example of a koala friendly backyard. Um, we've also got to look at ways to get koalas across roads safely. They don't use rope bridges, unfortunately. There's been quite a few studies that have looked at this. So we're about to trial a new, very simple sort of um log crossing. Um, on the Sunshine Coast and and see if we can get evidence that koalas will use these simple structures to get across roads. This is that diagram I mentioned that you can have a look at on the Logan City Council website. Um, just showing you some of the elements that'll keep koalas safer in backyards. And they've got a great video there on tips to help keep koalas safe. So yeah, that's all I wanted to run through today, and I'm sure there'll be some questions, and just like to finish by saying thank you. Um, to Logan City Council and to Wildlife Preservation Society Queensland for allowing me to be involved. Thank you.
Hey, thanks very much, Sean. Um, there was some really amazing information there to, and I'm sure you'll agree, so good to get that information in the one place. Um, we don't have to work too hard. So thank you for putting that all together. Some things that I picked up, I thought were pretty interesting. Um, koalas are sharp, so don't touch them though. Um, and I'd just like to, you know, to reiterate that the work that the rescuers and rehabilitation people do is just fantastic. They're such a dedicated bunch of people. Um, and you know, Wildlife Queensland, most certainly, thanks. Koala rescue groups and wildlife rescue groups for their work and tireless effort in the conservation of koalas, another species. It's really great to see just how um how effective rehabilitation programs can be in terms of landscape rehabilitation. And it's really encouraging that in a short period of time, we can certainly build corridors for koalas and replace usable habitat and get feed resources for them. You know, in contrast to gliders and other hollow dependent species where, um, you know, they certainly need the trees, but it might take a long time, hundreds of years. For that resource to be available. So at least for koalas, there's a good message in it and some real positive um information that can come from rehabilitation programs. So that's, that's great information. All right, so now that everybody has been fully koalified, great term. Um, it really is obvious that koalas do need our help and, and we can all do our little bit to to help out and jump on board with koala conservation. And participate in doing our bit in saving this, this amazing little native species. I'm not sure about everybody, but when I see koala, I really take a mental note and enjoy the, enjoy the observation. And the sounds, the smell, the bird song, and look at the animal and and really take note of what I'm seeing, because there's a chance we won't have them around forever unless we do work hard. Um, so if you do spot a koala out there, remember it, tell your kids about it. Um, make sure your, your children get to see that koala and and really enjoy that sighting, because they're a fantastic animal. That's a special one to see. I guess, you know, with with contributions from everybody, from citizen science. People from wildlife organisations like Wildlife Queensland, from researchers like Sean, and with contributions from local councils like the Logan City Council. We do have a chance to really achieve some good gains when it comes to koala conservation. Um, and at this point in time, it's probably safe to say that, you know, in the koala populations out these queens, then individual koalas matter. So. If you do see a koala in a precarious situation like the ones that Sean mentioned, it is absolutely. Important imperative for the greater koala population that that one individual is taken care of. That rescue organisations are able to get in and save that single animal, because individuals really count in the population at this point in time. If you do live in Logan, um in the Logan Regional Council, Lo- Logan Local Government Area, download that iNaturalist app. Um, and really get involved and sign up for that Logan Koala Count. The information that will be gained during that count in the month of November will be pivotal. Um, and really important for learning more about Logan's koala population, where individuals are residing. Where populations are moving, um and how many animals are actually out there. So get involved and log your sightings, get out in November and have a good look for a koala. Give your neck a rest, maybe take a pat on it before you go. Um, Sean did mention that, mention this, but iNaturalist is just an amazing. App for citizen scientists to log all kinds of wildlife sightings, but in this case, koala, what we're talking about. Record your observations, share it with fellow citizen scientists, discuss your findings. And contribute data to the Atlas of Living Australia. It's really important that we all do this. It is free to use. And like I said, your sightings really go a long way to helping researchers understand population dynamics of all kind of animals and particularly koalas. Clear photographs are really important and for koalas, uh there is facial recognition processes, so trying to get a great photograph of a koala's face. Um, with detailed time, date and geolocation information, which the app will provide for you is terribly. If you're not in Logan, it is still super important that you download that app and log your koala sightings, because again, that information is always made available to. Uh, researchers, uh and so recording any sighting is still really important and quite pivotal. Okay, time for some questions and answers. So if you do have any, uh, jump on now and write them down. We will certainly try and get to as many of these as possible. If we can't, like I said, we will write them down at the recorder answers at the end. There's a few questions that have come through so far that I think Sean answered uh as part of his talk in regards to scratch marks or, you know, what they look like. And can you smell them? Um, and I think, um, you know, there was good information in the talk that answered that. I think when it comes to scratch marks, combining scratch marks with searches for scat is the best way to verify what's going on in that particular area. One question Sean, I thought was very interesting here was with regard to mistletoe. Do you know if koalas actually eat mistletoe?
Um, no, I'm not sure if they eat it, but uh I've got a colleague who's done a lot of tracking and he regularly sees koalas sitting. In the mistletoe clump, particularly in the hot months. Again, it might be just a slightly cooler micro environment. Not sure if they eat it. I wouldn't be surprised to learn that they occasionally nibble on it, as they seem to. With a wide variety of things that are surprising, you know, some pine trees. Uh, camphorol has been recorded as being eaten. So they do seem to nibble on a, a wide variety of things, but you know, they're not stapled.
Is camphorol, it would be a little bit like a mouthwash or something. Well, an interesting question was about the age viability for young. So I'm guessing that's with regard to maybe young that have been rehabilitated or rescued. Um, what age do you think young Joey could be successfully released back into the wild?
Um, yeah, this is outside of, you know, my own experience, but I know through Amber that. Uh, even young that have come in only with a slight fur covering, so they're probably bounced out of mum's pouch or she might have ejected them. They can sometimes rear them through in care. Uh, we're monitoring one such koala at the moment that's just been put out after eighteen months of, of care, being found less than three hundred grams on the ground. Um, in terms of in the wild, I think we probably don't have a good handle on, on pouch young deaths. Uh, it might be more common than we realise that koalas give birth to a young and then it doesn't survive. It gets ejected and and we never know anything about it, um unless we happen to be examining it at, at, you know, multiple stages. Uh, but yeah, certainly those little ones can be reared through from quite a small size. They can still be viable and contribute back to the population when they're released.
That's fantastic. Um, an interesting question here. Sean, did you manage to find any koalas out in Natural Bridge?
Ah, did we see any at Natural Bridge? I, I know they're definitely down in the valley there on the, on the flats. Um, I can't remember if we saw them up around Natural Bridge. There's plenty of good habitat around in the Numanbar Valley. So um, yeah, I think koalas, it's an area where this, you know, you don't. Have to look too hard hopefully to find koalas still there.
Um, Louise Manning has asked about koala crossings. She says, we know they don't use the, the bridges that have been put up. Um, you know, will they use a culvert instead?
Yes, yes, definitely. That's been confirmed. Um, I think Griffith University did a good study that confirmed that. Um, and some of the ledges that are put in bigger culverts. But I think even some of those small, just purely drainage culverts, they will walk through, provided there's dry passage, of course, so. You know, when they're carrying water, um koalas aren't going to use them, but certainly they use culverts and they'll get along under um bridges. If there's enough dry passage again. So yeah, a lot of good stuff happening there, um retrofitting those sort of structures. Um, and making them more um inviting for koalas to use rather than trying to go up onto the road. And that, they're often used in combination with exclusion fencing to try to funnel koalas into those safer culverts.
I did just read recently on the weekend about the uh. The movement solutions for the Tuomba bypass and that a lot of pest animals are also using those culverts. So I think investigating. Uh, whether they'll use um solid structures over top of the road is a really good, um, really good track to go down and try and reduce any incidence of. Of pests getting um koalas as they cross. Um, a quick question I thought was also pretty interesting in light of. Helping animals that are, that need in rescue, is there any zoonotic disease that we need to worry about that can be transmittive? that can be transmitted from koalas to people during that process of, of rescuing?
Yeah, good question. And there's none that I'm aware of. And um, yeah, I haven't heard anyone raise any big concerns, you know, over the many years of handling koalas and, and particularly through the work that Amber does up at the hospital. The chlamydia is not a strain that can affect humans. That would be the main concern, given that's the main um, bacterial, you know, pathogen that affects koalas. So you can't contract chlamydia from a koala. Um, I'm not sure about other things um, that koalas could potentially have. Um, you know, certainly you, you want to avoid getting scratched or bitten at all, all costs, even just for the physical injury that can cause. But no, I'm not aware of any, any zoonotic threats that um, you know, people should be aware of.
Yeah, they are definitely sharp. Uh, you know, in your time surveying, there's a question here with regard to, you know, weed species at the base of trees and, and certainly I've come across lots of lantana and other species, um, you know, cat's claw and stuff making their way up eucalyptus trees. Do you find that koalas can't access gum trees where there is a weed species in, inhabiting or infesting the base of gum trees or even eucalyptus um, areas?
Yeah, it's something we're still trying to work out ourselves. Actually, we, we've been putting cameras on trees before and after lantana clearing to see if tree use increases. Koalas will push through, you know, like a, a lantana infestation at the bottom to uh, to access that tree. But I presume it, it probably does make that harder for them to use and it might deter some koalas from using that tree. So cat's claw, I'm not sure about. Um, just the abundance of it up, up trunks might deter them. Yeah, it's, it's an area of ongoing research, but it makes sense that really thick infestations of weeds at the base might reduce koala use of those trees.
And you know, with real, with regards to bushfire recovery, um, is there any programs where animals have been relocated from heavily torched areas into uh, landscapes that have healthy gum trees ready to go? Was there any part of that happening with bushfire recovery a year ago?
Um, yeah, I'm not too sure about the specifics of the programs down south. Um, yeah, I think where, wherever possible, koalas go back to where they're from, but obviously if the, if the environment's been so torched that, you know, the trees aren't responding yet or there's not enough habitat, um, and not enough browse for them, then it makes no sense to put them back. Uh, there's a lot of work and, and New South Wales Government is, is reviewing all their approaches to this stuff at the moment. There's a lot of work going into. Um, can we reestablish koala populations uh, in burnt areas, but not just burnt areas? Um, you know, rehabilitated areas or areas that still have a good habitat that where koalas have gone extinct. We're involved in one such program where we've demonstrated that you can reestablish koala populations in, in suitable habitat. Um, but it's all about having the founder individuals and you don't want to rob from one population to reestablish another. So yeah, there's a lot to consider. There's disease implications to think about, uh, genetics. So um, but yeah, definitely Queensland Government, New South Wales Government are reviewing all that at the moment because I think we're at a point where we've got to start um, trialling some new strategies to improve the situation for koalas, given the ongoing declines and then, you know, those horrendous bushfires that wiped out so much habitat.
Yeah, the microbiome stuff might be important too, if we're going to relocate animals and they're not quite ready for the dominant tree species. Uh, there's a couple of questions with relation to sniffer dogs. Absolutely. Detection dogs are often used for koalas and that's around scat detection as Sean alluded to. If you find scat, you're pretty confident there are animals there, but even the detection dogs uh, can be targeted to find fresh scat as opposed to old scat. So detection dogs most certainly are used in searches for koalas. Uh, and, and heat sensing drones, again, it's most certainly koalas give off quite a lot of thermal heat during the night time. So drones are very effective at finding koala. They're a big, heavy body and give off lots of heat. Um, thank you so much, everybody, for your questions and answers. Like I said, we won't get to all of them, haven't got to all of them. Um, but we will do our best to answer those and make those answers in written form available via the Wildlife Queensland's website at the events page and the Talking Wildlife series webinar. You can access this webinar and all the content associated with it. Um, so Sean, thank you so much for, for presenting today. We rely on you quite a lot lately, but you seem to be the expert on all the things that we do. So um, we appreciate your time and effort in getting involved. And presenting important information. Um, and thank you for Logan Council for making this web, webinar possible. We're really pleased to, to contribute to koala conservation in some really small way. It's not, we often do, but this is a good start. And thank you to everybody who attended and listened. We really appreciate your time. You know, they're such an iconic species. So again, we absolutely urge you to get involved in some small way with koala conservation. Um, report your sightings on that Logan Council, uh, Koala Survey in November via iNaturalist. Again, if you're in, in Logan and you don't have iNaturalist, you can call three four one two, three four one two and log your sighting over the phone. And keep an eye and an ear out for the Logan Council's Koala Awareness Campaigns via social media, via radio. Um, and get that message out to your family and friends. Let them know that this webinar is available to review, given the content. And really let's get this word out there and collect as much data on koala in, that we can possibly do. And there is a, a lovely glove box card that's available from Logan City Council Libraries. This is a super little resource that can sit in your glove box and it gives you all the information that you need. Um, if you come across an injured or sick koala, including koalas that are hit by cars. If you suspect there's a dead koala, what do you do if it's sick? So this is a really great piece of, of information that's quickly accessed. So grab one of those from a Logan City Council library, even if you don't live in Logan, the information is still very, very useful. Um, and again, if you do live in the Logan City Council area, look into the Conservation Partnership Program. It's a super program. We work a lot with conservation partnership programs across the region. Um, but if you'll sign up, you'll receive annual incentives, including free native plants, nest boxes, possibly even herbicides to manage weeds on your property. You're open and able to receive expert advice from council officers to create wildlife friendly backyards. Very similar to what Sean put up in his talk. Um, access to workshops and activities, the resources about weeds, native plants, the Logan City Council Conservation Partnerships. Offices are really well-knowledge and um, up to date on all kinds of weed and wildlife observations and plant identification. Um, and access to workshops like this one. And of course, you'll get a fantastic sign to display on your front scent, front fence, letting your neighbours know that you are involved in that program. And there are lots of programs, very similar run by other councils. So if you don't live in Logan, and I suggest you absolutely contact your local council and see what conservation partnership programs they have on offer. Uh, it will be similar and it'll be well worth you getting involved. Um, that way we can all contribute to healthy koala populations. Like I mentioned, we will have this webinar available to download. So please uh, pop back on, pick up on any information you might have missed. Tell your friends and family about it. Recommend that we get this out there far and wide so that everybody can learn about koalas, how to find them, what they're looking at and what to do if you come across an injured one and how we can all help to keep them safe in our backyards. That's really important information. And jump on board iNaturalist, log into that Logan City Council survey in November and let's find out where the koalas are located in Logan. So thanks so much for becoming koala fire today. We did learn a lot. Um, we hope you enjoy it. We're going to shoot you a quick satisfaction survey. If you're able to fill that survey out, we'd really appreciate it. Otherwise, get out there, have a good fun, get koala spotting and stay safe. Thanks very much, everybody.